Sure. So I'll call the uh meeting, planning and zoning commission meeting to order. We're starting. Mike Dane.
Here.
So, so.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Kevin.
Yeah.
They saw have uh Kevin. So for now. Mike. The act of secretary. Well, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about about our sonic problem.
Nope, just um encouraging all of you to speak directly into the microphone. Anyone who speaks to the commission, speak into the microphone. Go ahead and pull it off if you need to, but hold it up.
Our site on business is uh public hearing. A C H two three zero zero one try to square. Like where you read.
Notice it notices hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on Tuesday, September twelve, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. Community room two town hall annex one thirty-four. Groton Long Point Road and virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Z C H two three dash zero 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 one. Five fifty-five Sealy School Drive, Groton Pin. One six eight nine one five six four one seven six nine. C R Zone and Water Resource Protection District. Overlay Zone. Proposal is to modify the boundary of the W R P D overlay zone. Review is per section six point four dash three. Yeah, uh D and nine point three of the zoning regulations. Triton Square Owner LLC applicant. A Zoom meeting link will be posted on the town's website, meeting count. Meetings calendar. Uh applications are on file and available for public inspection during enormous business hours at the Planning Department, one thirty-four Groton Long Point Road. Groton, Connecticut, zero six three four zero, and at the Office of the Town Clerk, forty-five Ford Hill Road, Groton, Connecticut. The proposed draft zoning regulations can also be viewed at. Uh W W W Groton C T dot go. The departments forward slash. Plan. Plan Dev forward slash pan ding ding apps. P H P. All persons having interest in the application are invited to intend, comment, and provide testimony and evidence dated this first day of September twenty twenty-three at Groton, Connecticut. Jeffrey, Richard, Chairperson said, okay.
Yes. Yep.
Some of those things get.
Just to briefly review, uh I will handle the public hearing, the applicant, and this presentation. Staff will. Provide any comments, we'll open it up to the public for any comments. To the subject of the public hearing and then to commissioners. And then if there are any questions that still have to be answered, we will repeat the cycle. And you cannot receive any comments after the meeting is closed, so any piece of information is necessary to. Um make a decision. By the commission, one of them on the application has to be brought forth during public hearing. So turn it over to the applicant. Stand up at the podium and state your name and. You work for your address.
Take this out.
Yes, you can say.
Uh good evening. My name's Anthony De Joya um with the owner Triton Square Owner LLC. Um what you guys have in front of you tonight is a small modification to the Water Resource Protection Division line. Um when we started the site topos out there, we noticed that the map is incorrectly plotted. So we're seeking to move about a half of an acre um out of that and correct the the incorrect map in the corner there. So. This is uh Rocky Emment from S L R Consulting, our engineer, and he uh will walk you through and answer any questions you might have.
Beautiful. Just for the record, uh Rock Emmon, Associate Civil Engineer with S L R International Corporation out of Cheshire, Connecticut, ninety-nine Realty Drive. Uh here on behalf of the applicant, um how does the uh overhead rejector work? Just place it right in front of here.
Lay it out on the table facing facing.
Facing.
Yep.
Excellent.
And we are going to just zoom in on it, so.
So you know if I'm in the way. Oh, there we go. There she is. And what I'll do is I'll sort of stand here. And go through this real real quick. So. Uh. The current transfer project, which you know as the um the skill, the Sealy School Drive area is thirteen point seven acres of total area. Um this is the C R Zone. Uh as mentioned in the um the legal notice, there's also the portion of the property that is the W R P D Zone, which is located in the uh. Think this is northwestern corner of the property. Um. Essentially, what's going on is. There was an aerial flight that was performed. The aerial flight provided with the greater uh emphasis and greater accuracy on the topography within the area. Uh additionally, there was field topography that was done. Um and what's occurring is it's essentially showing a watershed break just off property. So if you see this little dot right here. This is essentially, and it's a little hard to see. Zoom in more. There you go. I'll kick this over. Beautiful. So this kind of hatched area is the area that we're talking about. This is point five nine acres of uh area that we're looking to essentially kick over to the property line. What's happening is there's an existing high point that's located approximately here where this dot is located, and that's where a watershed break is occurring. Uh also in your packet is the watershed delineation that we performed. Just zoomed in enough where I could overlay this on top. So as you can see with this map. The high point is this ridge here. And the watershed break, which is delineated by this large dash line, is occurring here. You can see that there's. Topo that is essentially splitting along the property line and then hooks right here as it goes through and goes back right into the W R P D Zone. Um. It's pretty cut and dry with regard to how the actual topography is working, and that's where the split is. So we're looking to essentially move that line. Uh on what we can actually do based on our property constraints um right up to the property line, based on the top, the topo that's kind of kicking it over. It's kind of in a nutshell. Have to answer any technical questions or if you have any questions for uh the applicant with regard to um. I guess anything that we've already discussed. Steph.
Yes, thank you. So um. So the mailings, um the required mailings to the people within a hundred and two hundred feet rather um are in order, and the required referrals for this project have been done. Um as many of you know, the Water Resource Protection District was adopted as an overlay on the zoning map in nineteen eighty-seven. Its purpose is to regulate activities in the drinking water reservoir watershed, things that might degrade the water quality. The watershed was originally defined using U S G S topographic maps. These maps, the scale of these maps is one inch equals two thousand feet, and the contours are at ten foot intervals. So the boundary, once it was established on the the quad maps, the U S G S quad maps, was then transferred to the zoning map. At that time, it was the scale was one inch equals a thousand feet. So you can see there's some room for error there. So the W R P D regulations recognize that there might be detailed topography, more detailed topography, such as that that's required for a site plan. And that might show um that some portions of the boundary are inaccurate. So the regulations lay out the method to change that boundary. Boundary has been changed in the past. Um adding an area that was identified as a future water supply, um eliminating an area around the old southeastern Connecticut Water Company wells off of Fishtown Road. Once those wells were abandoned. And then modifying the boundary on a portion of the Flanders Road what landfill. So the application has been reviewed by professional engineers in the Department of Public Works as well as at Groton Utilities, and both agree that the area in question does not drain towards the reservoir. The southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments does not see any intermunicipal conflicts, and representatives from the Navy Base have no comment. So if at the end of this hearing, you choose to um adopt, we recommend that an October one be effective thing to give time to modify the map.
Does anyone in the public wish to address us on this change?
Uh Tom Olson, one eighty-eight Crosswinds Drive. I'm here as a representative of the Conservation Commission. Uh we've taken a look at this um as a conservation uh commission and our, we're we're not challenging anything. Uh that engineering side of it, but we're more concerned relative to what are the other effects if you're moving this boundary? Because this boundary is right at a very critical point. Uh if you take a look at the Groton Utilities, uh drinking water quality management plan is a very distinct corner of it. Uh if you go take a look at the public water supply map in the state of Connecticut, it's a very distinctive corner. You'd basically change in a corner on a map. That's and then also with the Connecticut elevation viewer also has a very distinct corner at the map where you're here. And as far as. When we're going and changing maps around, there's also implications outside of our community here that we need to take into consideration and and there needs to be a process. Uh for informing all these other activities. And I'd like just challenge to the uh com- uh commission here as far as what are the other implications? Of just if you're giving a change here, how is that going to be migrated into the other areas of the state and uh and utilities and other maps that are also in consideration? Thank you very much.
Good evening, uh Gretchen Chipperini of eighty-seven. I am.
You think that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are we ready?
No, but you may want to pick up the, could you take the microphone out?
Yes.
To make sure, because we have to record this.
There we go. Great. It's better.
No, that's okay.
Also come up.
You can come up.
Sure, absolutely.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
I have questions about this. I don't understand, but let me do my script and then I'm gonna ask you questions.
You wanna see first?
Um, oh, that would be really great. Thank you. So this is mine. They're all off.
They're.
They're all. Are we gonna get a feedback? All right. So I'll start over. So Gretchen Chipperini, eighty-seven change drive. I'm the owner of the eastbound property. This is showing up here. Let me get um. Of this property um. I'm the owner of uh the property on this side, so I order this this area. In fact, I'm the owner of the the whole thing here. And the owner of the super eight property is right here, thanks one, sitting next to me. Um. And I'm an engineer, the same time as this type as Mr. Pritchard here. And I used to, I'm sorry, I'm a mechanical engineer, but I've done a lot of site work, tons of it in my life. My father was a civil engineer. I used to. Do work with him. I've always held the stick. Um so. Um. So the owner of this William Sealy School project wants to let out. Be let out of the requirements of a water resource just for the strange reason that the topography of her property or water flow direction somehow changes. When the resolution of measurement is changed to to the better technology of measurement. This issue was explained to me on in my meeting I had with Deb Jones, and she just explained what she explained to me. The physical closeness of topo lines on a map. Tells one the direction of water flow, i.e. the closer together the lines, the steeper the slope, the scudding runoff water in that direction. Change of the resolution of topo lines on a map has no effect on changing the grade of the real property in real life. The closest of top lines every two feet as at every ten feet shows that the water flow is towards Walker Hill or the reservoir in the subject area. For example, the hundred and seventy-fourth fit measurement line is subject is closest to the hundred and seventy-six foot line, which means a drop of rainwater landing in the subject area will flow towards Walker Hill Road. Or the reservoir towards my property. It will go, the lines are closer together. I'm a little confused about this engineering group. What they're trying to, they're trying to say all these topo lines on the original map are wrong. And I'd like to know where they get their new data. I don't, I don't get it, to be honest with you. Where did it come from? The satellite? I I don't know. I I I was never told these topo lines are wrong. So I I don't understand why they would change. Um so and if you go to the next line down, then in the subject area, the hundred and seventy-two foot topo line is closest to the hundred and seventy-four foot line. Closer than it when it, when you go up up here. So I mean, the water has to go this way because the lines are closer together. Over there where where this is. It's a little harder to see because there's the buildings here, but it's closer. Here than it is down here. So the water's gonna go that way. Anyway, you look at it. This isn't rocket science. So I don't understand what they're talking about. Inclusion, most of the water landing from the heavens in the subject area will flow towards the reservoir. This burden on them of an area being a water resource district should not be changed because they don't like it. Apparently, the water resource decision, I have not looked it up, has extra burdens. I'm in that district. I have not looked it up. Uh and their application for this relief is mutually exclusive with them not being concerned by the argument in this application that the water flow from the subject area. Is in their planning flowing towards the area behind the super eight property, which is, as I just explained, I disagree. Their opinion is totally contradictory to a lack of safety concerns. We're gonna get into that. To not putting up a retaining wall before building up twenty-five feet of unretained fill that would mix with torrential rainfalls create a great danger to the downhill property owner. Namely, me and his building. This applicant is trying to burn both ends of the candle in their favor with this application with one. With on one hand saying the water from the subject area is not running towards the reservoir, but the other hand, it is instead flowing towards the unretained and thus unsafe cliff of dirt that they have created. This is the very reason why these two issues are connected. These issues are connected. So they're saying the water is going over this way down here. Towards the super eight, and we have a a real problem here. If they think that, then they should be doing a much better job in their construction that's going on right now. So I'm gonna be giving you in the next part. Mr. Pritchard knows about this. Um pictures of this situation.
Let that go.
I understand.
We can only.
Earlier, but.
Could only.
Something to do each other.
We can only address this change.
So.
Map change.
So I'm I'm confused. Where the the these engineers get their data from? They just throw out a map to you and draw this new continental divide. Essentially, those. Those these squares here. Are the new, they're saying that's that's a new continental divide. Water on one side is going one way or the other. Where did they get that from? Where in the world? They, I don't think you you said. Where did that come from?
No. No.
Oh, well, I'm gonna answer to that question.
Yes, but let finish your statement because you're addressing, you'll address us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I like to know.
He can, you can have him answer. Yes, if you have a question.
He can answer it now. Later.
I'd rather you finish your con out.
I like to continue with saw. I don't know where. The the restructuring, the re, they're claiming this topo map is wrong, I think. Maybe, no? Okay, well, I don't understand that that in in this topo map. If I'm a, you don't have to be an engineer to understand this. The topo lines are closer together up here. Than over here. So that's telling me the water is going this way. The topo lines are close to that water. When that drop of water comes from the sky, it gets there. And this water is gonna go this way because the lines are closer together than that way. So I don't, I don't understand. So they're saying, no, that's not true. That this is the new continent. I say the continental divide goes, goes. Goes kinda, it's curved. It kinda goes this way. You see how they get close together down here? So I don't agree with them. About this, the water. Maybe there's a little mix. Maybe some of it goes that way. When you get further uh westward, some of it goes this way, but the bulk of this area goes. Towards Walker Hill Road, which is towards the reservoir. So and I don't know why we should all just accept some engineering company. That says, well, this is the new map. This is the new continental divide. Where did you get that? Did you go out there and resurvey? First of all, they're doing construction here. This. This site is changing shape as we speak. Every day it's changing shape. I can't walk in there with my lay. And they have fencing around it. So I don't know. I don't think they've done work up at this upper part. I think it's a, I went to school here, so I kinda know the lay of the land here. And I don't think they've done anything to change it. So I pretty, you know, I know from experience where where things flow. I'm the neighbor. So I don't think they've done anything. They've changed, they brought tons of fill down near me. They brought lots of film, but I don't think up there they have. So. We need, we need answers. So right now I don't agree with this new map, and I don't think we should accept it without more answers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Follow the engineer. I want to explain.
Um.
I don't know if you can blow up though.
Well, yeah.
It's hard to.
Anything I could. This guy. Is this allow me to explain how to delineate it? Uh so. Once again, just for the record, uh Rock Emmon, Associate Civil Engineer with S L R International Corporation. Um. So the description was essentially foretold with regard to the proximity of contours to contours, but it's not just the proximity of contours to contours. It's also the angle at which the contour um is actually transcribed, and what happens is based upon that transcription. Uh water travels perpendicular to the contour. So just to give you an example, uh if you're looking here. You're seeing these contours kind of parallel to each other. That's where water's flowing in this direction. That's going essentially this way. So as you go closer and closer to essentially this. Kind of triangular piece. This is a break. So that means water's going this way, and then water's going this way. And then what we're doing is we're following that break essentially with this new line. And that's what is actually this side of the watershed versus this side of the watershed. And that specifically this ridge that's going along the property line, you can see it kind of described here, 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 here. Especially as you go on the property line, you can see there's a very big inflection point as you're going forward. That's why we're moving this line over. Because that inflection point is really where the break in the water is. Some is going to the right, some is going to the left. You can even see here. There's kind of a bevel here. This means that it's a trough situation, so it's high, low, which means that there's a swale essentially going back along this edge. Um. That's kind of how a delineation works in a nutshell, and hopefully I could articulate that pretty well. Um I guess the second. Point that was made.
These contour lines.
Yep.
Like where you have the arrow.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
And arrow. What's, what's that reading? You know, what's the?
So. Oh, so these are two foot contours?
Yeah, but I mean, what's?
It's like.
No, but it's.
Between one seventy-four.
One seventy-two. You're going one six, yeah.
Yeah, as you.
You're lying out.
Four feet there.
Yeah, that's that's higher.
Yes. Yeah, there's the, the scale is uh one inch equals fifty.
No, you can, they're, yeah.
Yeah.
They're lined up.
Elevation.
The elevations are.
Oh, the scale is one inch equals fifty. So essentially, it looks like there may be.
So that's.
Two feet or get two feet in every fifty feet or so.
It's got stamps on it, but. There is.
Right, but you look at these ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's where it essentially breaks in between the two. Um and then there was also the question of where we got the uh the new topography versus the old topography. So as Deb was mentioning, that the uh the original. Uh W R P D Zone was delineated using the uh U S G S mapping. Um when we did the transfer project, what occurred was an aerial flight and photogrammetry. So what happens is there was an actual plane that flies above. They shoot uh individual points. It's a cluster of points that essentially create the new uh tin, which essentially gives you the triangulation of. What's going to occur with the topography. Those have elevations, locations, everything, and a licensed surveyor puts all it together. They essentially say, hey, here's your new map. You know, once we got the new map, we were like, oh. You know, there's a ridge here. There's, no, it's not necessarily the same as the USGS map. This is significantly more accurate. Uh additionally with this, as part of the project, there was field topo, which I was mentioning, which is. You know, uh what I would say is a step above what a aerial topography could actually occur. You're getting into uh more refined topography because you're actually trying to locate specifically where things are, what elevations are. And that is actually what creates how the contours are moving. Um so those specific points and those specific elevations. Um triangulate and a line is drawn to connect what would essentially be all of the, let's say it's the hundred and seventy-four point zero. Points. It connects all the hundred and seventy-four point zero points in this line. So if you were to essentially follow this line with a surveyor. He should get a hundred and seventy-four every time along the line. Then that's essentially what a contour is. Um. I think. That hopefully explains it. Does that explain that for your, do you have any? I don't know.
No.
Okay.
We have.
Understood.
We have to.
Okay. Got it.
I like the decision.
And that's for the people.
So. I guess it's sort of hard for us to. Make the.
Well, specifically. Specifically, one of the comments that was made was this was reviewed by uh professional engineering staff of the town of Groton.
Yeah, well, that's what I asked for some.
Yeah.
Evidence of that and that we can.
Yeah.
Because somebody in this town staff has to. Agree.
Mr. Champ. May I uh address? Um, the the dotted line that you show on your map.
Correct.
Is different from what you're proposing.
Correct, because we can only zone change on our property, right? So we basically go right up to the property line. We don't own, obviously, so I think this is owned by Brown Utilities, and then this, this is a uh just a neighboring a butter. We can't. You know, legally change anything on the property.
But I mean, your overlay zone. Was meant to be a overlay zone over various properties, correct?
Certainly, and and if those property owners had agreed to join this application, we could change the zone there as well.
That one.
Right, exactly.
The actual.
E- exactly, exactly. So this might be something that, you know, the town wants to take up um and, you know, notifying property owners that. That we're going to be changing. You know, the overlay zone on your particular properties. But um the applicant chose to just address their property. Um and and one other point I just want to make, the the approved Triton Square Site Plan. Does show the Water Resource Protection District as it's shown on the zoning map, and it does. Uh it is consistent with all the regulations of the W R P D.
Hmm. So anyone else in public wish to? Make any?
Well.
Questions?
U S G S.
Well. Oh, wait on, you can. We, 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 these issues have to be addressed to us. And we make the decision. Oh. Well, you can make a statement again. Well, you can, you have. Yes, you have to come up.
But we need. And, you know, it's it's recorded um all right, but Mike doesn't pick you up back there.
You can.
You can come back and sit the same chair.
If you have a, still have a concern, just state what your concern is. Yeah, you can use this mic. You can leave such.
Oh.
You want to speak? The microphone.
My concern is, I like to know what's being gained by this app. There is that, there must be a motivation to do this. If it's not that important, then why are they doing? And my hunch is, I told you, I haven't read the Water Resource District. You know, requirements. There's something they don't like in that, and I think that should be known to you. What are they after? What are they frustrated? Something they, and I, it may be an increase in parking that they're being held up on. I don't know. I don't know why they're not telling you. I think I'd like to know what it is. Um. And I don't. So are, we're not saying the U S G A now. So, are, we're not saying the USGA maps are wrong, the topos. I don't, I don't quite understand. Are they wrong? Are we staying tonight? Are we setting a precedent here that we should ignore all USGA maps? Topo maps now? I mean, I don't, I don't quite get it. Uh, you have to make a decision. Uh, which way you want to go. And I don't, and I, I think an overlay should cover, we should all, all the property owners should got a notice. I guess they did, but that it should be changed in the whole overlay. You know, it, I mean, you can't, this is kind of halfway. Half, it's. Why should it all be applied to them? It should be applied to everywhere. We're changing the contours. We should change it. Everywhere. We should change it throughout the whole town. You want to be fair about it. So I'm a little, I'm a little confused. There, there's motivation here. What is it? What's their motivation? There's something they don't like in those requirements? What are those? They haven't said. And um. And, and why aren't we applying the whole overlay over everything? And, and being fair to everybody. Now, you can't expect people, yes, I'm an engineer. I'm familiar with this stuff. Most of the people around aren't. You know, and this could adversely affect people. They should be made aware of this. You know, I, I just don't think we have enough information. Yeah. You know, and uh. I don't. I don't, I don't know. So I'm confused what maps we should be looking at. I think we're creating confusion. Okay?
So if no one else in the. Has any thing to state, open up to the commission. Commissioners to. See if they have anything. In my state and questions to.
I, I. From staff, um. But from, I, I don't see that this is changing the topo maps. I mean, there's nothing, I don't think that there's anything inherently wrong with what. The USGA has drawn on there that elevations and conduits.
No, this does not have any impact.
I didn't think so. I've just, I want to make sure that that's clear.
Maps, that's great.
That's, that's good. Yeah. And so it's just how that map was and is now interpreted.
It, it's just the scale of that map.
And it's more.
Right, this, uh, right. Ten foot contours, two foot contour, um, two foot contours is going to give you a more detailed look at what the topography actually is. Rather than ten foot. Rather than a hundred foot.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions.
So.
Yeah, thank you. I think, uh, yeah, usually um, when you come up with questions like this, it's usually. Um, pretty cut and dry. This is unusual in that the way the topography goes right there. And I did spend quite a bit of time today because I'm, I am very familiar with looking at maps and I'm very interested in watersheds and all the other good stuff. And to me, and I use, I have the. USGS map on my phone. Even looking at that, which is not as accurate as what we have here right there. It's like. In the, in the sense that you don't have the two foot lines on there, but you do on Yukon system. I was looking at that and I felt very comfortable. That what you were saying was accurate. Um, I don't know all of your reasons for doing that, but of mere application that that should be a change. Because the way you did it now refines that and really shows that little ridge in there and all that and how things are doing. I'm perfectly comfortable with that because that's what it looked like to me. So. That's all.
And we, for references that. We don't have, do we have to identify those?
In terms of.
Well, what she was just talking about.
The, the Yukon maps. I mean, yeah, those are not in the file.
No, I know.
Good, right.
Well, Yukon advanced newer, because when you zoom in, that's online. When you zoom in, you get to a two foot. Uh, contour lines.
Okay.
The, the Yukon maps that she's referencing are the twenty sixteen aerial. Um, and that's specifically light arm app.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Sorry, I should bring my references.
No.
Yes. I didn't think about it. Yeah, it's no problem.
Steve, do you have any?
Um, is it pertinent to know why this is taking place?
It, it's not something that's required by the regulations in order to apply for a change. Um, all that is required is a demonstration of what. The actual topography is at a, a better scale at two foot contours.
You know, but the, you need to see impact. What's the impact? If you're in the W R P D and.
Sure. So, so you will not, uh, you know, the W R P D has um, restrictions on certain uses um, that might um. Degraded water quality. There's a limit on impervious surface. Uh, there's a limit on using salt. Um, there's a number of, of other restrictions in the W R P D that might not necessarily apply to the general C R zone. But as far as, i- i- is that what your question was or?
Right.
Okay.
But. For the purpose of what they're doing, they don't, that is.
That's correct.
Okay. Um. I just, you know, the making it on the property line bugs me because we didn't do that originally. When we created the overlay zone.
Mm-hmm.
And. I just wish we could do it the right way.
Uh, uh, understood. We, we had that conversation actually, um. And, and the applicant. Did not um, coordinate this application with the abutting property owners.
And when the zone was created. I mean, we don't have the leverage to just do it the right way.
I mean, sure, you can, you can instigate a map change.
We can.
Of course you can.
Yeah.
Of course you can.
Okay.
Not in G S map.
No, the overlay.
It's the overlay.
Yeah.
It'll be the overlay.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
I think that's it.
Kevin.
So did the applicant want to state? Why they're doing this? You know, it's not required. Yes. I sure, can I show the original site?
Sure, it's sure. Yeah.
So. Having. Basically useless in the middle of our parking lot up there. We have a pond essentially in the middle of our parking lot.
You, you've got a.
Yeah.
We, we essentially have a pond in the middle of our parking lot. Um, that's meant to, to keep that water in place there, um, because of we, you can't have impervious surfaces in the zone. And we're a little tight on parking here, so we, we'd like to. Make some parking spaces up in, up in the corner there. We figure we can probably get about ten to fifteen spots up there. So it's, it's, it's. An unfortunate design in the area. It, it doesn't look right, doesn't feel right, and we'd like to have a few more parking spaces in the area.
You still have your.
No, no, the pond will go away. The pond is specifically there because it's in the W uh, R P D zone. So. What our argument is that it's actually unnecessary to have that pond there because the water is not shedding into the watershed area.
Question again as the engineer know. So I understand, I understand pitch and I was an algorithm very well. Your point is at times it depends how the rain falls, the angle of the rain we use.
No, so.
Angle of.
The angle of the ground.
The ground.
The ground, the ground is really what's directing the flow because you can have. Let, let's say that you had an isolated storm literally of like a, let's say a foot by a foot. If it hits, uh, let's say a triangle of, of ground, it's going to shed in both directions or all three directions. You know, it, it's going to go that way. So that's how it's delineated is we're figuring out where that raindrop is going and where that watershed. Is specifically breaking. So left being, you know, water's going that way, right being, you know, going the other way. Yeah.
Well, what you presented is a science whereby it's not like related to randomness.
No, this, this is hard fact.
And so both the towns then will sit at it as well.
That, that, that's correct, as well as professional engineers in our public works department and professional engineers over at Groton Utilities.
You have one other question for the conservation committee for the implications you're talking about. As far as what you, what you reference.
Right now, it kind of goes back to, um, as someone I mentioned, that there's other. Activities out there that are, have already made a determination in where the, where the line is. Admittedly, it's at a higher level, but you're moving this stuff. Now, are you going to communicate that to these other people? That's our concern.
Meaning the butter is.
Or whoever's, you're, you're changing what the town has been using.
Right.
Okay. And so, and, and the, the, right now, the, the way that they, they uh. Groton Utilities, the, the state of Connecticut Public Water Supply, it's all has a line that incorporates that corner right now.
Sure.
So you're moving that.
Right.
And are you going to, now, you're taking that in knowledge, are you then going to transmit that to, to get other people to move their lines also? That's our concern.
Well. Fuck one.
No, no, that's exactly right. This is a line on the zoning map that only, that only influences the zoning on it. That's right.
But so the issue I have is that you have improved topographical information now. Is that going to be transmitted? Well, that's the question that you're asking.
Okay. So. I guess technically that dialogue is already technically started because the uh, Groton Utilities is being supplied the map. They already have the map. So at least from that perspective, they are also under PURA, which requires them to essentially do an assessment of. Their watersheds and their like inventory. So if there's an adjustment, it's already kind of. Steamrolling in place. It stands to reason that'll go that far. Um, obviously, I'm not the one that would be coordinating that effort, but. Logistically, that's kind of where I see things going. It would just make a lot of sense. So. It's my technical opinion. That's not.
I did. Yes. Can you?
Come back.
Yeah.
Favor of the overlay becoming. Part of the town, the plant, uh, you know, part of wherever it goes. It should be changed and done right. Okay, if that's the new data, technology changes, then we should do what we know. And uh, we shouldn't just cut off one corner, but one, I didn't know you could do that. I, I'm, I'm kind of knew these overlays. I don't know much about. I'm learning tonight, so I think we should just implement the whole. Thank, thank you.
You done with your notes?
Um.
You know, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I just had one, one item. I would like to see. The evidence, hard copy evidence that the public work, our public works department agrees with this change.
Okay. And I have that via a conversation with the public works director, so I don't have it in an email at this point. Um, I can certainly get it. And, and place it in the file.
Well. I don't know. Can we make a decision based on that without having?
You can either make a decision based on my representation of my conversation with him. If you actually want to have something in writing. Before you, then you would need to leave the hearing open. That's correct.
Since in reality, it's a safety issue.
I mean, I do have, and I think you have it in your packet, the comments from Groton Utilities. Right?
Yeah. Yeah, but I want to make sure it's like that professional engineer.
Yeah. It, right. Carl Assimovic is a, a professional engineer. He is their stormwater engineer.
Oh, is he?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I didn't have any. Did you want to keep? Hearing open? Is that what you'd like to do? I write the clause.
I mean, we don't have to.
No, I know that. But if, if we have. Something in writing. Says that I didn't know that. That's what my concern is. I didn't think we had.
Well, there was something in there.
Maybe I didn't from everything else.
Yeah, it's a person.
I had that stuff. There's so on from Groton Utilities. But it just says we, Groton Utilities Electrical Project Management has no objection to the request.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. It was um, reviewed by Doug LaFontaine, one of the uh, managers of the water division um. In concert with Carl Assamovic, who is there again, part-time professional engineer for stormwater.
But this doesn't. Really state. I guess this. I guess that the information, you know, is. Here and around about way.
It, it is, um. I gave you their comments. I did not give you the email that they sent transmitting those comments.
Mm-hmm.
Which was Carl and I looked at this and um, we have no comments. See attached.
Yeah, well, it does sort of. Is anyone else? Are there any other issues? Other than the administrative ones? But that doesn't affect. The, the, the application.
No, no, it doesn't. Nope. It's just a matter of whether you're comfortable with it. That's all.
With the application.
Correct.
Be the.
That's right.
Zone, overlay, zoning that change.
Right.
You just want a, a formal affirmation.
Well, I think it should be on file.
Yeah.
In case there's.
So can we just make that a condition? I mean.
No, we cannot.
Yeah, no, wouldn't. If you want to have that in the file, you need to continue the hearing so I can get. An email from the public works director.
That would be considered new information.
Oh, yeah.
It would be normal.
All right, even though you verbalized them.
I, I mean, he is technically your staff, so.
Yeah, just somebody in.
Exactly, yeah.
Either public or. I just think you should have something on file. It says the town. Rather than just rely on the, the applicant's.
Yeah.
Technical.
It would be used.
Okay.
So, so I'd like to quit. Keep the hearing open.
Okay.
You can have that. And to make, present that information. Does anyone have any other questions?
So.
So.
What's the date?
Uh, twice, uh, yeah, twice.
Okay, so. When you make your motion, just reference the day that you're going to continue the hearing.
Okay, so make a. No one has any other? Questions or? So make a motion then. To uh. Continue the uh, public hearing to our next meeting, regular meeting in September twenty sixth. Until twenty twenty three.
Second.
So in the second, a discussion on the motion. So a vote on the motion. All those in favor said aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and extensions, motions carried.
You did. Thanks.
So our. Next item was uh. On the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have August eighth and August twenty fourth. I'll entertain a motion for approving the minutes of August eighth. So. So a second.
Second.
Moved in second. Did you get those?
Yeah, I got those.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Does anyone have any uh, corrections to the? But August state meeting minutes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I know, well, I'm sorry. I think there's some questions from the audience.
I think there's some questions from the audience. I I think we're done.
What? We're done with a public hearing.
Till next, till the twenty sixth.
But we do have public communications. That you may want to speak for that.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, we've just we're continuing the public hearing to our next meeting. What? No, we are. That's later on. Our first item on, next item on the agenda is approval of our minutes. That's what we're doing now, and that will be public communications. That's where you can. I didn't know it was that bad.
Well, then then pull it in close and you can hear.
No.
Yeah, there are.
Are they?
Yeah, they are. So if you get very close, you can hear it from coming from ceiling. Right, exactly.
So I'm not close enough to the mic.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
That is right.
Fine.
We do have the headsets. We also have headsets.
For your use, if if, yes. Oh, talk louder. You can sit closer to. First row is empty. All right, does anyone have any corrections to the minutes? So then uh we'll vote on the motion to approve the uh minutes as written for the August eighth meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay, the motion is carried for her in favor. One abstentions. The next uh minutes is the August twenty fourth meeting. I'll entertain a motion for approving the minutes of August twenty four.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Does anyone have any corrections in the August twenty fourth minute? Billy gets an edible boy and greens go star for this. So a vote on approval of the uh minutes of August twenty fourth is written. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. Okay, next item is public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications who are pressed? I have a couple of items that I want to go on record for. We received uh an item from Tom Santorini regarding his interpretation of uh Pleasant Valley Road South zoning determination. And we received uh input from Jenna the surf regarding artificial turf. And town of Ledger, we received notice for a public hearing tomorrow on on Thursday night, I guess it is. For uh an application for this zoning.
For a special permit.
Permit.
So if you want to provide comment, you should add that to your agenda so that.
And we researched, received comments from Ian Chipperini. And on this Sealy, the Trident School project or Trident Square. And also from uh the cl- town clerk on the same subject. And on from uh from Terrence Wong also on the same subject. And on these items, I think uh if anyone has any concerns on the zoning officers thing, we should add that to agenda. Does anyone have any concerns on doing that?
Nope, no.
Okay. The artificial surf. And if you search, I guess we could just handle that later. But the one that does have to be added to the agenda is the uh town of Ledger's referral for their special permit, which I'd like to add to the referral section of the new business.
Mr. Chair, was there any guidance on that?
Well, well, I think that's what we would hear from the town staff. That was your net package. This is them. Hmm, I couldn't, I couldn't understand what was going on.
I got it, yeah. A lot of documentation.
A lot of documentation. And also whether we want to address uh Gretchen's concerns. I think we should get that.
Or I can address it under reported.
Or you can do it under reported staff. You you will do it there. Okay, and then we can see if we want to need to take an additional action. Okay. Does anyone in the public wish to address us on there? If you want to come up Gretchen again. You're getting your exercise in tonight.
I'm gonna be up here.
Yes, you can be up here. No, that's fine.
Thank you.
No, well, yes.
Hey, hello again. My name's Gretchen Chipperini, eighty seven Phoenix Drive. I'm here to discuss the dangerous situation created in the last couple of weeks by the owner of the project being built at the former Sealy School site. Which presently sits at a significantly higher elevation along the east border of the hundred room Super Eight Hotel. On which land I own in my, and it's where my storage building is. And you can see that in this first picture here. Um and that pile of dirt behind it, which I estimate to be about twenty five feet tall. It's quite vertical. With forms for footings being built at the top of it. This just happened in the last two weeks, I would say. This commission proved a significant two-tier retaining wall to be built along this border because the elevation change of about twenty five need feet needs to be retained so that a landslide does not occur onto my property with the risk of causing serious property and human harm. Normal construction procedure is to build a retaining wall first and then backfill and lift with compaction of each lift as you go. Unretained fill cannot be contact packed without retention. Right, and I want to just give a simple example. I almost made one and brought it in to show you. But then I decided you can understand. If I built, put two by fours on edge, a square, and left one side off. Put sand in it, push in the middle, where would the sand go? Would come out the side. You cannot compact unretained dirt. It's it's liquidy. It moves. Okay? And they're gonna complain. They're gonna say they compacted it. Well, you can't do it. Uh therefore, talk about any compaction data is a is a moot point until the new ground created is fully retained. To add insult to owner of this property is now building his concrete reinforced footings on top of this unretained soil with heavy equipment, adding thousands of additional pounds of pressure on top of this wall of unretained dirt. The owner is risking structural damage to their own building by building its fitting footings on this unstableized ground. As you can see in the second picture right here. This this uh goes on for several hundreds of feet. This is long, this unretained situation. And it just happened, it was just there. Um I recently met with the town inspector on site. You know, I'm probably Scott. And strangely, he spent most of the time with me showing me pictures on his phone of the significant damage done in Vermont from the force of water and soil. He was a vase and tell me how he is going to put a stop to this ongoing danger situation. I was told by Scott that the retaining wall has not been built because their designer does not like the visual design of what was ordered, and also because there's a delay in delivery of the block. That none of this has any relevancy to safety right now, which has been completely ignored by the actions of this owner, but should take precedence over any of these excuses. No show, no fill should have been allowed to be placed to such a height until a retaining wall was first built. Period. I've never seen anything like this in my professional career. The block wall arise tomorrow, that would take time to be installed in time for the hurricane season upon, will not will take time and not in time for the hurricane season upon us. And construction timing and order events do matter. Enforcement of safe construction procedures is the responsibility of the building enforcement officer under the leadership of our planner, John Reiner. And competence in this matter is putting property and life in danger right now as we speak. I, along with the owner of the Super A Hall Hotel, who's Terrence Wong, was sitting behind me. Then met with Dove Jones, who went on to tell us that she knows nothing about construction and that if this continues until after the growing scene without a retaining wall, that she is going to require them to put up another silt fence and some hay bales. I fail to understand any relevancy to her remarks. A foot and a half high stake silt fence and stake bales is like reengraging the deck chairs on the Titanic while sinking. And there's no growth of anything on this virtually vertical wall dirt, so the growing season has no relevancy to this situation. There's nothing there. It's just dirt. As I already said, we are at the peak of the hurricane season. Right now, a hurricane named Lee is heading our way, and there are three more behind that. The severe landslide damage in Vermont was created by less than hurricane level winds and rain. As a professional, I go to this wall of dirt. A ninety five percent chance of creating property and bodily harm when we get a hurricane. And a still high probability of heavy rains lesser than hurricane level. The combination of dirt and water creates a force that is capable of destroying anything in its path, especially a woodstick built building like my storage building and the Super Eight Hotel. By the way, the Super Eight Hotels reports about too many families of employees and owners. The town of Grant has not been now been put on notice that God forbid of any harmless cause on this property due to neglect of the enforcement of common sense construction practices in or and or effective landslide risk mitigation, that it will be held fully responsible, all damage to property and person which can come to millions of dollars and maybe even loss of life.
Anyone else wish to address this to me? Yes.
I'm Anthony DeJoy. I'm the owner of the property. Uh we take complaints like this uh very seriously. Um so the first thing that we did was we sent our engineers out there to do an S and E inspection report. Um the report came back, the findings were that the S and E controls are in place, they're done well. We had them make some recommendations on how to bolster those on S and E controls. We will erosion mats on the hill, compacted multi check dams. Um we we have the swell, um a couple additional uh rows of silt fence have gone up in the meantime. Um but what she's saying is simply completely untrue. The slope in the back, it's about sixteen feet tall to one to one. Um we added six feet of material on once one section of the foundation. Um to, we picked it up about six feet in those eight lifts. Uh we had swelp compaction tests that were done supervised by licensed engineers. And there's presently no risk of a landslide occurring. The things that she's alleging are fantastical. She's throwing arbitrary numbers and values on on risk. And it's it's fantastical and uh it started to borderline harassment at this point. She's called the state building inspector who came out and saw the site and had no issue. She's called the town inspector who came out and saw and had no issue. Our engineers have no issue. Our construction team has no issue. Um and at this point, she's uh reverted to calling our insurance carriers. She's called our bank today. So at this point, she's she's just harassing everybody. She has a bolt bit. The town, she's taking it out on on us. So I have a copy of the S and E control report. I also have the compaction test for that material.
Just want to see what that look like.
So that's the accident control. If you look at some of the pictures, um the way that she's so it it looks like a but look at some of the pictures in there. It's it's not not twenty five feet long.
So it's sixteen.
Sixteen feet and six feet. This was uh past that three engineers. So we're not putting beach sand up on a hill. Uh we did make a change on the type of lock that we're using there. Uh for static purposes, and that's not the reason why the walls are not being troubled yet. Lock is actually scheduled to be and their engineered systems, you can't build these retainables. They have drainage aggregate and active bill. They have engineered materials. Um this is Oliver's building that goes borrow off of that wall. So it's it's a very, very difficult task to build those foundations, build those walls. So we had our final word was say tomorrow.
Yeah, we asked question.
Well, yeah, but I wanted to have a presentation from that later.
Yep, thank you.
I don't know if it makes sense to just like.
I'd love to hear from staff.
Well, oh, yeah, but I, yeah, we're gonna do that later. Okay.
And and again, I said, we take these complaints very seriously. We sent the engineers out there immediately. Uh we we well, that's on actual um S and E controls out there, uh which we're basically gonna just dig up now in the next couple of days. We'll just start building the wall. Um but again, this is, this is has gone far above. When I said she's fall of the stage, she's called state reps. Um she's called our banks, she's called our insurance carriers. Um it's it's borderline harassment in in libel.
Right.
So just for the record, say what an S and E control is.
A sediment and erosion control.
I just want to hear happen, you know, when we use word terms like that, it should be clear. Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to continue on with the the agenda. Our next item is site plans. We have CSP twenty three oh one. Landscaping improvements, eleven park.
And we'll be right back, please.
You want to state your name and address or?
Good evening.
What you work for.
Good evening. I'm Keith Nielsen from Daco Incorporated, and I prepared the application documents for Mr. Yurkey um that you'll be considering tonight. Uh this is for a coastal site plan for Mr. Yurkey to conduct uh yard regrading and re-landscaping of his property at eleven park our place in Groton. It's uh right on the Mystic River. And um the application drawings that uh that we submitted are based on an A two um uh T two top graphics and boundary survey for the site. Um the issue at hand is that the property occasionally floods and the lower lawn um stays saturated for an extended period of time, which he can modify by um supplementing the soils on the site and re-grading them to. And regrading them to uh be typically one percent side slopes and two percent longitudinal slope down from the. Middle of the lawn down to the edge of the retaining wall, uh which is a uh mortared uh stone and concrete. Um, uh structure. This site was uh formerly a boatyard um more than a hundred years ago. And uh which accounts for the odd shape. Um, there were two access wharves um on either side of the boat launchways. And then um uh as it was transitioned into a residential uh property, um the area was generally landscaped. Um, the property does host tidal wetlands vegetation and the lower um intertidal zone is bare gravel and rocks. Um, which um is not a part of this project. So um in my early meetings with um. Uh, the uh staff here, um uh it was decided that uh the most suitable project would be uh minimal landscaping. Uh, we've um accounted for approximately the addition of two four hundred and fifty cubic yards of gravel. And topsoil materials, the existing grass will be stripped from the site. And then once the um um new gravel and topsoil is graded and um. Um adequately suitably suitably compacted, it will be replanted with um uh salt tolerant grasses. The plan that we've presented is very simple.
Keith, you actually want to put it right up there?
Yeah.
And I'll put it up on the on the.
Okay, so the existing conditions are shown on the website of New Braun. And uh we uh polarize a little bit here to differentiate between uh tidal wetlands vegetation, the beach. And the existing lawn that happens to go up here approximately twenty five feet out of the scope of the uh the survey and out of the lawn. Um, and uh, so we're not hearing of any issues with. Um, the lunar grading is going to be about five feet uh just uphill of the five existing five five curve that shows up in both. Um, both views. And you can see that instead of the four contour and three times were um going down thoroughly uniformly into this low flat area on both sides of the lawn. Who are going to be going through the five contour, the four contour, uh one percent, two percent slope in the middle of the lawn. One percent slope on the edges and one percent side slope in both the areas. The water is going to be direct this way. This one, this one, that that way. And it will be direct to the next step. On existing um uh lawns and then down to the property. So we're not directing on your new grade offsite. And um by using the grades and gradients that we've shown there, the um um there will be the ability for maximizing groundwater absorption. And uh the one will uh spectacular it looks right now. And uh Mr. Yurkey is an arborist, arborist. And uh a biologist in landscaping is going to be business all its life and uh just plus.
That was staff. Their presentation and then open it up to the commission.
All right. Good evening. Um, just to reiterate a few things that um was discussed, the site is located within the coastal area management plan, thus requiring the camera view. Uh, the 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 proposed ediment, uh ediments, erosion and sediment control um uh finds it meets the requirements and will protect the coastal resources from disturbance. One of the things that wasn't shown is there is an existing uh public access at the end of Park Place. Um, it's adjacent to the project site in the southeast side. Public Works had initially had a requirement to remove the small bushes within the edge of the right of way, but after reviewing in the field with the applicant, um that uh basically the director of public works rescinded this requirement. Uh, the bushes are minor in nature and they do not encroach or impede public's uh access to the water. Uh, the owner is however aware that they are in the right of way and could be removed in the future if the town issued and work do so. Um, there are uh no known or foreseeable adverse impacts to the existing coastal resources. And the project site will be completely restored and once completed, better address runoff and flooding issues currently impacting the sites. Um, I think you all got a copy of the draft motion um and and the staff summary sheet. Um, if you didn't, I have plenty of copies right here as well.
So anyone, I'll open up the commissioners on and questions they might have, right?
Uh, is the uh public access identified? I mean with a sign or something?
It is. Yes, correct. It is. Yeah.
Questions?
So my only question was if you're gonna use salt tolerant grass, because I know GLP was using that quite successfully. You answered that question.
Same. No comments.
Kevin? Sure, I have a couple. So can you show us the right of way on that and where the bushes are right now? Where where it says park place here?
Yeah.
Um, is the right of way and the uh the bushes are right about where it says park. So the bushes aren't right away or they're not? They are in the right. Why do I don't get what I don't understand that? Why are bushes in the right of way?
The um, Mr. Yurkey, he was just um, he has um taken care of them and.
But he's left. He is lost. And he understands that they're in the right of way. He understands. So the staff, why wouldn't someone if he watches they're in a right of way, such as a public launch, why wouldn't we ask that those bushes are?
So again, part of so Director Polyworks did bring that up, that they were within the right of way. And um he actually went down there to meet with the applicant specifically specifically about them, while talking about them, removing them. And when he went down there, the pictures that the pictures that were taken before versus what's there now, the bushes are much smaller and they are not in the way. There's plenty of access down there. So basically, the director said that he didn't have a problem with them as they are right now, and they do not impede any access. There's a. Uh, uh, it is a slight wall, so the the. It's not just a straight right of way. All right, there's a little teeny jog at the end. And that jog in the end has a couple bushes there that were planted by the last owner from what I understand. And so uh the director basically said that. They're fine as is with the understanding that if in the future the town, if they get too big or if they become an impediment, that the town would order them to be removed.
But it's a land landowner and bushes. That's what I don't get. So if he knows they're in the right of way, why don't we at this time? Yeah. From to the property, to the property. Oh, and that's part of it. Yes, part of the request, right? That those bushes.
That's what plans does.
Trim and not extend past that right away property line, but they do, they do right now.
Right, we put that um, we put that notation on there before we were able to do it uh very carefully. And um when we went and discussed the project, beginning the uh concept of of cutting down bushes. Um, Greg also acknowledged that. If we opened the area, thought that it would be a scar on the land. Uh, opened it up to uh erosion, that would not be. Productive for the town or for. Yeah. You know, they um, they are decent looking, decent looking landscapes and that's.
And so, but like, he's a landscape. Person, and I'm sure he could cut those in a different way, would know that landscape, right? My only point is if we have a public right of way, and we have a, I presume it's a boat launch, right? And we know that there is a landowner who has encroached on that. I can't see moving ahead of application that has um that encroachment, right? That's my.
And I do have, if you would like to see the email communications from Craig, yeah, I'm happy to share.
You know. Uh, with regard to the boat launch. I've been working across the street from this site for um twenty two years and I've never seen anything like. Use this like, I know that there is a rowboat um leading up on the side. I don't think it is. They left it, I I believe it's abandoned because it has press break more time. There is a path that has been started on open floor indicating where they want to go, where they're great, bro, and so on. And I know who to use that way. Uh, in in my opinion, rowboats give them ways there. Does make the area look nice and it does not stabilize the ground.
But it's preventing the boat. So if I have a thirteen foot wheeler and I'm trying to launch there, I can't launch that wheeler as it sits right now with the pushes.
No, you.
The terrain and the price value of the um edge of the right of way is there, that's a about one to two foot drive. You can't take a five feet pound boat down there. Even if you have. It would be stuck to trail. It's um for quarters for inwards, kayaks and small. And other than he put the rowboat down there, but um. Sure, I got it. We're not getting into that, but you know, for for quarters in for the carrier vessels and so on, this is an adequate. And you know, it's an interesting attribute to the to the neighborhood and so on. But the.
Yeah, the only last thing I was gonna say is is it where the bushes are right now, they're up on a slight wall. So there's a, it like I said, the. It's not a very straight right of way like this is a little jog at the end and where the jog is at the end, there's actually um a rock wall that that kind of extends with the property owners. And the bushes are actually on top. They don't extend out. They're basically, there's enough room for for, like you said, like a small boat, kayak, new, something like that. And I guess that from what I understand, that's what it's been used for. But if it's something you want to grab, we can look at that.
And it really is maintaining historic access to the water as a whole.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And like, we have a lot of things before the mission that continue to ask that. And that there's no prevention of any access in the right of way, the end of Janelle and the high positive.
It looks like an unused streak.
I would also point out that the the bushes are in this area. The streak comes down like this and just makes it on the job. Good mention. And uh, these uh these bushes are clearly on the side. They are on the higher ground.
No, I don't have any questions. Does anyone else have anything? Does anyone have? Have a problem in the proposed motion?
Does everyone have a copy of the motion? Because I have additional copies here as well.
So I don't have it in front of me again.
So I read it.
Everyone else is?
Alright, it's it's not the site plan, it just. Proving the can.
Right.
Right. Anyone have any questions? Problems of the motion?
So I do. So my point is, um, if the technical items don't address the bushes, which I can say for the moment they're there. My belief is, and I've looked at it several times from the water and from my people later, which I do get the drop off, who actually maintains the end of that right of way? Where it drops into the water by a foot or two.
Well, we're just approving the camp, honestly.
Okay.
Okay, so make a motion. To approve the coastal site plan application CSP twenty three dash oh one landscaping improvements, eleven park place. Let me say Mystic River is there. I guess eleven park place with the following conditions. One existing tidal vegetation seaweed. Of the proposed erosion and sediment control shall remain undisturbed. Two technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission hereby finds that the application is modified is consistent with all applicable goals and policies. At CGS twenty two eight dash ninety two. It incorporates all reasonable measures which would mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources. Is there a second?
Second.
Move the second in. Any discussion on that? Hold on then, the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion is carrying. Moving on to uh new business, any new applications?
No.
Referrals, we have the one referrals from the time of what we.
We do.
This can stay.
I think, I think I understand.
All these pieces of paper. Applications and re. I don't know how many Chinese the plans got revised.
So I'm I'm just going to lay it out in front of you. The basic um, basic plan of the site. So I I believe they already held a public hearing in June and recognized that there was a flaw in their notification in that this commission was not notified because of the proximity to the property, that the town line. So it 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 appears that this is an old excavation slash gravel operation. Um, that is continuing to operate and it's not clear in the ledger files. Whether it's grandfathered or whether there's only certain parts of the activities that are grandfathered and have been in place since before their zoning regulations. So this application is a special permit to continue excavation as as you can see on the plan. Um, to remove material um and and basically cart it offsite. Um, through the town of Ledger. Uh, it is very close to the town line. Um, the access to this site is also serves as a driveway to um a resident in the town of Groton. Um, you can see that there's a water course there that flows north. Um, so it does not flow south to our reservoir. Um, and so the, you know, the your your role here is is there any impact on the town of Groton? To continue in some of this and especially issuance of the special permit.
Special permit sounds like littles.
You know, it 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 kind of does sound like that. I think I think the applicant, I it from what I could see of all of the information they put on their website, it looks like the applicant believes that. That they're grandfathered use and it looks like the the planner in doing some research thinks that. Maybe only some of those things are actually grandfathered. And so to clean all of this up. You you know, they they want to do a special permit on the site.
Cause it's a process, yeah.
Right.
Well, it used to be a processing.
Right, exactly. Yeah. Yep.
Does anyone have any concerns? For this?
Where where is this?
So this is off of Route twelve. Um, and it's off of Baldwin Hill Road, which is actually on our side of the borders Pleasant Valley Road North. It's it's as you're going north on Route twelve and you cross the ledger line, it's the first road to the right. It's where you turn. I think there's a self-storage facility up in there. Um, and you know, as well as as this operation and then again the. Cerro Bolo property. Yes, very, very. I think one of the biggest cliff about a hundred foot. On Cerro Bolo, yes. Yes. Yeah. Yep.
Is there rock crushing going on up there? It's just X.
I I think there's there's.
They said there was a crush.
And there's crushing.
Blasting, but they weren't they crushing?
Yeah, I believe they are.
Crushing, so I mean, that would be, I mean, I can't think of any. Concerns other than the noise possibly or.
And and.
Right down the neighbor.
Uh, sure, but I mean, the neighbor's home is is quite a bit further south down the driveway. It's not, it's not right up on it.
It's an existing condition.
That's correct. That's right.
It's it's the neighbor of rotten resident.
Groton. I mean, there may be people who live in Ledger that I, you know, that are adjacent to this.
Yeah, but the complaint it tends to the ledger zone. Um, were those rotten residents?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And is that city water up there or is that all wells?
It's wells.
And it flows north.
It does.
That's hot.
Some things do, yes, so. It's interesting. That the number of springs are.
So it flows north and it's going through some sort of.
It it ends up over at the veins. Yep.
Um, it's flat. I forgot the name of the book. Well, yeah, it's one of like Flanders.
Could be put in. Saying from a rotten standpoint is that um. I don't know exactly how they're gonna issue this thing, but it's up to them of course. But I mean, I like I hate to see an expansion of that anywhere closer to rotten, right? I don't know that is a type of thing that.
I mean, it it looks like it's practically up to the line. Up to the, yeah.
Right, so it's not like we can limit it in play.
I I mean, it looks like there's a conservation easement. Um, that will protect the actual line and there's a conservation easement along that that water course, a small one.
But the whole area is so. It's a combination of pristine. Hundred foot things and a really impacted. What.
Essentially that entitles, I mean, this is an intensification of the use that's there.
Well, it's it's it it's an expansion of it. I mean, they're gonna continue, you know, mining the the earth material from. From the site.
But that's not clear on that that was ever really done there. That's and I wasn't. Yeah, I think the planner was saying.
Right, right. And that and yeah, again, that's a ledger issue, but yeah.
No, it's true, but to me, this would be a whole new relook. And you have to get all the neighbors really brought in, you know, and they talked about a hydrology study, which is. One of the things, especially people having problems already.
Now, is there um?
Hydrology study is a good thing.
Yeah, right.
Because of the wells.
And so um. The W P C A commissioners, they were neither for or against us. But they would like to request a formal review of the hydrology, the effects of blasting, the material removal has a local well.
Yeah. We support that statement. And that's something that we support that's.
Well, I I was gonna mention with like bonding that we usually do in situations. You know, when it might be some damage. How does that work with across town lines?
I I mean, it's whatever, it's whatever condition that Ledger puts on here. If they. If they have a requirement for, I mean, typically in this case, the bond would really be just for restoration. You know, if they stop, it wouldn't be. To to create a new well for someone whose well goes. Goes bad because of the blasting. Yeah.
But you're gonna need a really big bond.
And. Yeah.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't think when you get to a lock and you don't know the risk.
Uh, yeah. I mean, in this case, it's it's really a sediment erosion control bond, you know, to restore the site if they stop work.
And returning it to some.
Something, right.
Place that's recent.
Well, it said recent activities included blasting of the ledge, which drew complaints from neighboring properties because they, I think for them was something new. And prompted a review of the file to determine whether the use was actually committed, right?
It's really, it's impact.
Not the.
Right.
There's a lot of rotten residents. Some that we don't even know that they.
What would be the comment?
I'd like to see some sort of comment that supports hydrology and study.
I'd like to see. Thank you. Um, I'd like to see a study that supports the hydrology approach. That the commissioners have stated in order that um Groton landowners um don't have an adverse impact. On whatever ledger um decide. That's what I'd like to see.
I'd like to see really some of the same things we put in with the littles, you know, the hours of operation. We had noise standards.
They have hours of, they have hours.
No, I was saying, the ones I'm talking about are six thirty in the morning. That to me would not be acceptable next to my uh home.
The blasting.
Yeah. We do. So things like that are to me are a little bit. They're not like the norm is and something we've done a lot. So I think that would be, and I think we limited the amount that could be processed. Yeah, whittles is kind of. Easier because it's. And we could say half can come from the site and half could come from offsite be processed and shoot back. But we're fairly willing to find it. Now that we know about the state noise standards and that's an opportunity. What else didn't that make? Let's see. Oh, I said pretty early, six thirty.
I mean, it sounds like hours of operation and the hydrology, I mean, almost. When they do this special permit, is it like they're starting from scratch? And they've put those kinds of.
Yeah.
So like, I mean, we might just reference to them what we required of the Whittle operation. And that this would hopefully be our expectations or, you know.
There'll be the noise too.
Maybe just some of the, you know. We could reference that.
Should it all, should the whole place be allowed to be blasted? Or should it be some like so?
Because I believe there's like a limit there to the number of yards that they can resume that from the site.
Whittles, that's great.
Yeah. Is is the um, did you say the access is by a Groton Road?
No, it's not. It's it's from um, it's from Route twelve and Baldwin Hill Road.
Okay, but you said it goes by the the resident, the Groton resident?
It it the driveway. It you can see on the map.
So the driveway is shared, but they they also, there was a statement that they believe there's some sort of relationship, right? Between that landowner.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is actually a driveway. You can see the entrances and exits to the excavation site to continue to south. And come to um another house. Which is in the town of Groton. This is the problem.
Yeah.
With the town line.
And the other, the real problem that. You see on the left side, you guys will come for a long, that all of them come to it.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it's obviously going to be. In this side, you probably can see a contour line because it goes up on it. So you have a real wall there. And if you have some sort of big noise. I think you're gonna really. Yeah.
I mean, I guess.
But there's no trees, it's a granite cliff, right?
Yeah.
So you got a hard surface. That if anything is knocking against.
So I'd like to, I I think just also to clarify so this is not hard on our staff. To say we we support the need for hydrology study. And and we would also ask that you provide similar guidance or consider similar guidance that we provide to the, we provided to a similar site. An analogous site, which is a littles and just give them.
And just and just, yeah, consider the limits of the operation, you know, to lessen the impact on on. Residents in the air, right?
There's something like.
When a rotten resident has an issue with something that's going on in Ledger, do they have any recourse? I mean, other than they can go and complain?
Absolutely, they could, yeah, just like anyone else and complain to their zoning official if it's a zoning issue or or their wetland official if it's a wetland.
But that's, that's why, well, we get notified.
Yeah, no, I know. I just, it's just.
No, no, I mean, that's.
I just try to imagine how we would. Handle something if a person from Ledger can then you know, was complaining about something just. How how uh. How you handle it, you know?
It it doesn't really matter where they live. If it's an issue in Groton, we would deal with it.
That would be pretty happy.
Yeah, yeah. Which would, well, that's the way it's on a paper too.
But public comment, you see, they're not all from Mystic Groton.
Right, right. Right, public.
Okay, so we'll make them.
I mean, we've been through this before, so it seems, I mean, with littles, so it seems like something.
Right.
Yes. Yeah.
Our concerns are.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So our other, that's it for referrals. Report. I hope they're seeing like this. How they cannot even get on the agenda?
I know.
That's what I. Didn't understand. Okay. Reports. And chair. We did, I intended a uh. Committee of Chairpersons meeting. And we had in August thirtieth. In which people outside had communication problems, they couldn't hear. I guess we address the upcoming town plans. Your climate action, bicycle and pedestrian plans. Plan of conservation and development. Tree tree inventory disposition of excess public property. And heard uh. Other commissions. Lot of stuff in the future.
Who's your chair? Was that you were directly in Groton?
Right.
Just all Groton.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, you know. It's a commission that has. And very few meetings. The last meeting was a year before. Which I didn't, I didn't realize. But it should try to, it was intended. To set up communication between other landowners. Which I guess we still, Larry Dunn wants us to sit down. And talk to. His commission. So when we can get something on the P O C D.
Yeah, I anticipate, I anticipate that to be in in October. Like a discussion with you all about before, before we, before we write the R M P.
Oh, right.
Yep.
And then we can say. We're trying to get in. From other commissions. Okay, is anyone on the commission have anything to report?
Well, I did it. Oh. I did attend the other sessions for coming this week one hour and a half.
Can you email Deb excellent rate?
I wouldn't, I have to do it twice.
I know, and and we keep forwarding you the opportunities just. You know, just in case.
I keep forgetting about them.
Yep.
Put on the side, I'll do it tomorrow.
They need to be complete by January.
We need to report to the councils, that's right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Next to site plan reviews, I can't wait. Actually, that's gonna be.
When is that? The site plan review?
It's the second section.
The one we just had.
I mean, it's almost good.
Okay. I don't have a reported staff. We want to talk about questions.
Oh, yeah, sure. So. So yes, we all were made aware of of her concerns of the material behind the super eight motel. So the building official is handling it on on his end. He does have some building code issues um with regards to safety and and sediment erosion control and he's dealing with it there. On on our end. The plan that you approved had a phased sediment erosion control plan. And it laid out a sequence of events. And in this particular location, the sequence that was approved was. Install the retaining walls and then start on the on the foundations. So. As you can see, um, that order was reversed. Um, so we contacted the owner. First of all, asked him to immediately install some additional erosion controls up the slope and then to get his. Engineer out there to um actually do a complete um inspection and make recommendations. Um, I'm also expecting a revised sediment erosion control plan for this particular sequence to. Address the fact that there are no walls there at this point and how are we going to keep that slope stable? Um, uh, as uh Tony DeJoy mentioned, there will be concrete, the blocks will be on site tomorrow. The they will be starting the wall very soon. I I had some concern, there are other walls on this site. Particularly uh against the houses that are on Saint Paul. Um, and and I wanted. I told him, if you're gonna be doing this same, changing the um. The sequence of events over there, frankly, I think that's. Even more impactful on the number of houses that are there. Um, and and he indicated as of right now, they are not going to do that. They are going to install walls first before they do buildings. Um, up above it. Um, so I do expect the Dubai sediment erosion control plan soon. We do have a copy of the the E N S report from the engineer who has certified that it is. The the measures out there are appropriate. And we will continue to monitor.
Those engineers are from there, those are their reports.
Exactly. Yeah, yep, the folks who designed the plan that you that you approved.
It is pretty steep, the land.
It's one to one, it is steep.
And it's like they're, I mean, photographs, I didn't, I didn't have time to go look, but it looks like there is some like gullying.
Not anymore.
Oh, no.
No, these were taken quite a while ago.
I was just trying, you know, and you can't tell.
No, yes. I mean, now there's erosion control mat on the slopes as well as um additional uh sed fences as you go up and and some drainage swales to get the water away from the slope. So those were taken.
What are the things that we? Could do at this point, this commission?
At this point, I think it is just dealing with the sediment erosion control plan and the sequence.
But there's not, I mean, it's not like we.
There's not a, there's not a, I mean, at this point, there's not a cease and desist.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was sort of, I didn't want to say those words.
Right, I I don't think that's appropriate here. You know, if this had been in another area of the site where there was potential for actual erosion into the wetlands, the wetland agency would certainly take that kind of. Of action because they specifically have the authority to do correction orders and and cease and desist. Planning and zoning, not so much. It's more of a zoning enforcement officer going out.
I get it.
Saying, you know, you're not compliant with your site plan.
I mean, this did happen up in Montville, I believe, when they were doing the Home Depot, the whole, the whole thing collapsed and it made a. You know, yes.
Right. Right.
Giant uh disaster.
Right.
So it's, it is a concern, but it sounds to me like there's not a lot that we can do and that it's gonna be remedied.
I mean, I think it's being addressed. Um, the owners certainly understand the. You know, the concerns of the adjacent property owner. Um, and and anybody going out behind the super eight would say, yeah, that that were behind my property, I'd be a little concerned too.
Yeah.
Um, but but nothing has eroded down onto her property at this point. And and again, the erosion controls have really done deep stuff.
How long will it take them to put the wall?
They said maybe two weeks and it's not one wall, it's two low walls. Yeah.
Remember that.
Yeah, they are, they're terrorists.
Don't.
It has a.
They have to do like behind them and cliffs and.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, that should have been. It seemed to me like that which should be done while you're doing it. You don't want to be digging under, I don't know.
Right.
I would think I would want to have that in place before I started putting on.
And that's traditionally what I have seen, but but again, I'm I am not going to direct the contractor how to build his building. Because as soon as I say something wrong, you know what? It's my fault.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
It would seem like, I mean, you know, you can't, oh, a compact under. Foundation, you've got to do it for you. Would seem.
Yeah, you wonder, what do I know? That's what the zone, that's what the building inspector.
It's what the building inspector has. It's why the contractor has insurance, exactly.
But that that particular picture looks like there's a mountain back there, but he said he only had six feet.
Six feet to the existing, right, to what was existing out there, absolutely.
And it's, it's, the picture is very deceptive, you know. When he said six feet, I was like, oh, wow, that looks like about a twenty foot hill there.
And right. And and when you go out there to look at it, you would assume, I mean, it's all fresh dirt. You could easily assume that, oh, that's all brand new fill, you know, and yeah. Yeah.
Well, well, it seems like we support what the staff is doing. I mean, and I think you're also very good in going out in that it can't impact other portions of the site. Um, where we've laid out the plan, particularly where it's more acute to neighborhood houses. That that's a great thing to say, to call them out, right? We understand, but you need to correct it, which you're zoning your um. Enforcement.
Right.
Building official has stated, and then um let's move on, let's make sure you follow the plan. It's pretty simple. And it seemed like.
And it seemed like. Aren't, so they are actually pouring concrete up there, I mean, that's.
Yes, that is correct.
Like tomorrow.
They're finishing tomorrow.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I can see the form set up there.
Yeah.
And how high, how high is something going on top of it?
Um, it is, I've forgotten, I think it's four stories.
Yeah.
Just to note, Florida, um, building that in last Hollywood. Reports you all hadn't seen, it did come out, it's very interesting for. And they don't blame. Any erosion underneath that building for the collapse. Natural erosion, what was built on, so very interesting.
Wow.
This just came out with them.
This, this is the one in Miami.
Yeah.
Where the, where'd you see the report?
Um, it's on the NIST site, National Insurability Technology. And it was reported, um, out from there, people. Analyze that report, which is very interesting what did go wrong. Which was around the pool and they constructed incorrectly.
Oh, that's what this.
Yeah. And you know, NIST did the nine eleven. Get bored as well.
Busy writing articles about fishers on. Okay. Anything else? Then we have our quarterly, uh, newsletter summary. Anything to note? A S P report and application.
That's a good summary, I think. I, I think this quarterly newsletter is excellent.
Oh, it's always interesting. Yeah.
Sometimes it's hard to get my instinct. No, I mean, it's not as clear as.
It really brings up some.
All the key points, that's what, that's what the objective is. It's the examples, sometimes. Does anyone have anything else?
Do not, I do not.
So I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So me.
It's moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I'm in favor.
Is that a unanimous vote there?
I wonder whether we'll hear more from Gretchen.